I'm sure this doesn't go over thirty minutes. I thought I'd throw it out there, so people want to see why I'm rushing along.
It's my fault.
You made the recommendation.
Just a recommendation.
Okay, it's all good. I just wanted everybody to know. All right. I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975.
Okay, I'd like to take a moment of silence. Right. Commissioner Victoria Loeb. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We should have a roll call.
Commissioner Ostino.
Here.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Here.
Commissioner Romero.
Here.
Commissioner Loeb.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor.
Present.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Here.
Director Soro.
Here.
Do I have a motion and second to accept and dispense with the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In an email dated February 10th, 2025, Union County Board of Commissioners notified Cumberland County Board of Commissioners of Resolution 2025-164 adopted by the Union County Board of Commissioners at a meeting held on February 6th, 2025, urging state leaders to pass legislation that will authorize counties, municipalities, school districts, and all local governments to publish legal notices in a clear, transparent, and timely manner on a local government official website. An email dated February 13th, 2025, Morris County Board of Commissioners notified the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners of Resolution 2025-158 adopted by Morris County Board of Commissioners at a meeting held on February 10th, 2025, urging support that will authorize local governments to publish legal notices on a local government's official website. In an email dated February 18th, 2025, the Monmouth County Board of County Commissioners notified the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners of Resolution 2025-0148 adopted by Monmouth County Board of County Commissioners at a meeting held on February 13th, 2025, urging adoption of Senate Bill S. 4048 prohibiting the construction of certain warehouses proximate to historic districts and Assembly Bill 1298 establishing grant program for the preservation of revolutionary war sites. In an email dated February 19th, 2025, Atlantic County Board of Commissioners notified the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners of Resolution 118 adopted by Atlantic County Board of Commissioners at a meeting held on February 18th, 2025, urging support that will authorize local governments to publish legal notices on a local government official website. In communication received February 24th, 2025, Downtownship Committee notified the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners of Resolution R. 43, 2025, adopted at a meeting of the Township Committee held on February 10th, 2025, authorizing the Township of Down to participate in the New Jersey Coastal Coalition Automated Flood Alert Application. Do I have a motion and second to open public comment?
Summoned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sandra Acevito, Upper Deerfield Township. I will be providing a copy of my comments tonight to be included in the official record of this meeting. For as long as I've been attending meetings around the county, the topic of conversation seems to revolve around economic development. While I do understand how important economic development is to a community, real, true prosperity must include the economic prosperity of families and individuals in this county who are struggling every day to survive. What I'm not hearing is the way that this board is looking to provide that prosperity to its citizens. While a county park system is nice, I'm not sure it's very high on your constituents' list of things they need in order to survive. The constituents who are worried about where their next rent or mortgage payment will come from, how they will feed their children when they wake up in a cold house that has little or no heat at night, or if they even have a home to wake up in, really, people who live paycheck to paycheck if they're fortunate enough to even have a livable paycheck. Economic development may help special interest vultures, but economic development in this county preys on the taxpayers that foot the bill. Citizens in Cumberland County will continue to suffer until we address the elephant in the room. And presently, that elephant is a Cumberland County Commissioner Board that continues, very much like their predecessors, to pump millions of dollars into projects that the taxpayers see no benefit from. Yes, the lawyers, the engineers, the consultants receive a significant portion of our taxpayer dollars, so I'm sure their families don't have to worry about when they wake their children up from their warm beds, that a nice hot meal will be waiting for them. Unfortunately, when I shared a concern and a request from one of your constituents at the last meeting, I was rejected very callously, I might add, when her fears are very real and valid. Politicians have lost sight of what is truly important, and that is the citizens you represent, not special interests, not using our tax dollars on projects that go nowhere. Jim, I would be very interested to see how your new park system and the millions it will cost will go over at a homeless shelter, at a warming center, at the food lines at our local houses of worship, or even at some of the tent cities around the county. Those are the people you should be addressing when you speak of economic development. A park system may be on a want list of potential people moving into the area, but all one would have to do is drive through our cities and look at all of the boarded-up homes, warming centers at full capacity in each city, and the need for the many food drives in the area to see that this may not be an area they want to move to if the leaders of our county cannot provide for its citizens. And on another note, I read the minutes of last month's CCUA meeting, and I'm watching very carefully how the county is eyeing up the fiscally responsible CCUA. Don't think for a minute we will allow you to send in your marauders to pillage through this fiscally responsible infrastructure for your use. Excuse me, special interest use.
Thirty seconds.
You may need to be reminded that it is a regional facility, not a county facility, and not a windfall of cash for your use. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. On Resolution 2025-127, this is a resolution authorizing approval to submit grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the CR 670 Morris Town Road Over Morris River Structure Rehabilitation Project. And then I read the body of the resolution, and it says "replacement." So is this a replacement or a rehabilitation? I think there's a difference between the two words. Also, you plan on going into executive session this evening on matters relating to the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property or the investment of public funds. We are self-insured, and when you're buying more properties or making more parks, we have to have more insurance. And I believe that next month or April, that the Insurance Commission of the county will be having a public hearing on their budget, which the budget is over $4 million. And that don't count what we pay out, that's just for them. Also, on another note, I would really like a public meeting where you tell the general public the state of the county. Last year, it was done at...
Centerton.
Centerton, Salem County, and I heard that within the past couple of weeks, it was done to the violent chamber conference. When do the general public get to hear the state of the county? It's top secret. What is the state of the county? We have a new CFO. We haven't had a treasurer's report to the public without opening it since October. It's February, how's the budget going? Nobody's talking. You said you want to have a half-hour meeting. The last meeting was a half-hour. The meeting before that was one hour seven minutes. That included executive session. When are you going to start talking to the general public? You said you're transparent. I don't see where you're transparent. Just because you put it on TV, on YouTube, or on the web, that's not being transparent. We want to know what's going on, what your plans are, how you're spending our money. You get paid to work for the people. Thank you.
Good evening. Celeste Riley, County Clerk. I just am here to give some information. We're in the midst of the primary election season, it has begun, and it has been legislated now that there's a change in the number of signatures for countywide petitions. So you'll need 100, if you're interested in running for a countywide office, you will need 100, in our county at least, 150 signatures minimum, all right, for you to get on the ballot for either, for the primary election. The primary election date has changed also to June 10th. They're giving it, the legislature wanted to give it more time, so. And if you're running for a local municipal office, the petitions are not filed at the county level. They're filed with your municipal clerk, and they have signature requirements also that have changed. I've posted that on my Facebook page and on our clerk website, and you can also contact your local municipal clerk for that information. If you are interested also in running for independent, as an independent candidate or what they call unaffiliated candidate, you can file your petition at the clerk's office, and the deadline for that is June 10th at 4:00 p.m., so on the date of the primary. So if you don't want to be affiliated with a party but you still want to run for a countywide office, the deadline is June 10th. Did I tell you the deadline for the primary, the deadline for the filing for the primaries is March 24th at 4:00 p.m.? In the county clerk, I apologize, just tripping over my tongue here, the county courthouse, not the mall. It has to be filed at the courthouse.
So there's two different dates. Please make sure we get this squared away. The March 10th is...
No, it's actually, it's March 24th is the deadline for party affiliation to get on to the primary ballot, the June 10th primary ballot. June 10th is the deadline for anyone who wants to be on the general election ballot but run as an independent. All right? Any questions from the public?
Madam Clerk, I do have a question.
Yes.
You mentioned countywide office, you mentioned municipal office. Are there any changes for anyone running for Assembly?
Yes, but that doesn't get filed at our office, and so if they have questions concerning that, I would recommend that they contact the state election, the Division of Elections. It's also on their website, but yes, they have a lot more signatures to obtain now, so it's much harder now to get on to the ballot. So you got to get, if you're interested, you got to get working, all right? Thank you.
Good evening. Chuck Albino for the Department of Corrections. I just wanted to take a minute. I think everyone here is fairly knowledgeable that we've been short-staffed at the jail well before I got there. We've made some inroads in getting some staffing onboard, but we still have staffing challenges. I wanted to just publicly thank Sheriff Donato, and in particular, I want to, not that I want to single him out because there are some other officers that have helped, but this weekend Officer Jared Foster helped us. We had a complicated juvenile case, and my limited juvenile staff was already on duty for about 10 hours and had to take a trip to Newark, and he was able to get a volunteer to assist so we could at least get one of our officers home. And he helps out quite often when we have, sometimes we'll have inmates at the local hospital that pools are already short-staffed, jail personnel out of the building. So I just wanted to publicly thank him and his staff for the times that they've helped us. They don't get that recognition, I wanted to do that publicly, so thank you, Sheriff.
Anyone else from the public to speak? Seeing none, motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to address just a couple of things. One, when we talk about economic development, it's a broad term. It's not any one thing, it's not any one business. It's an accumulation of a lot of different items when it comes down to economic development. Economic development, what are we trying to do? We're trying to create jobs. What are the jobs for? For those people who don't have jobs, all right? And there's different tiers of that. We're trying to work on bringing industry in, businesses in, where we don't just create a job, we create, well, a career, all right? One of the things that's happening right now, the CICA corporation that's moving into Upper Deerfield, what I was impressed about with them is that their employees stay not 10, 15, 20 years, but 25 to 30 years. That's a career. This is what we're trying to do. When you're looking at the manufacturing caucus that Senator Michael Testa just brought up, that's going to be involved at the CC Tech, well, what's that about? Well, businesses that come in, they're going to have equipment. They bring the equipment there, individuals get trained on that equipment, so when they're finished, they can actually go right into the factory, right into the manufacturing area. What's that do? That's economic development. Is it a broad term? Yes, it is a broad term. But you're absolutely correct, nothing's been done for years, so nothing happens overnight. We're taking steps at it. The caucus is one with Senator Michael Testa. It's great that it's actually in our own backyard. This is something that's very important. Bringing businesses, like the two major companies, Lasana Pappas and CICA, that's another thing, all right? You're looking at $200 million investment, that's not chunk change. Two years that they're going to be spending that kind of money. 200,000 square foot building that's going to be introduced into the area. You're looking at hundreds of jobs. That's not little bit. So when you talk about economic development, you're talking about a lot of different things. Park systems, yeah, they're nice, a lot of people would like to have. They spent a lot of money, they gave a lot of money from the federal government in the last administration to make sure we have park systems. That's where we're getting a lot of the grant money from. People want us to be outside, they want to be happy, they want to enjoy the environment. There's a lot to county government, and nothing happens overnight. And as far as I'm concerned, the last two years, there's been great strides in moving forward. So that's, as far as the state of the county, we're still working on a budget. That doesn't happen overnight. We're looking at a number of millions of dollars in lawsuits that we're going to be trying to cover. We're doing a lot of investigation into department heads and the departments and trying to cut spending, not budgets, actually cutting spending. If you spent $1,000 last year, how about if we do 900 this year or 950 this year? That's what we're looking at. Literally going department to department to try to make sure that we cut spending. And our department heads are doing a great job because we're cutting spending. And it's not easy. And we have a gentleman that just came onboard in January, our CFO, Chris Hart, and he's been working diligently, and I'll tell you what, he's been under a lot of pressure because he just got here and everybody wanted to know what's going on. And Chris, I just want you to know, I think you're doing a bang-up job, you want to believe me when I tell you you're doing a great job, he's coming up with a lot of ideas, and we appreciate what he's doing. Again, things don't happen overnight. Just wanted to get that out off my chest. I think that this board is moving forward on a lot of different issues. There's issues that we can't talk about because of negotiations. And a lot of things are being done through grants. We're very fortunate that we have people that can get these grants. Millions of dollars are spent in this county by grant money. Now, people could say, yes, that's right, it is taxpayer money, there's no doubt about it, but it's taxpayer money that comes from all over the country, it doesn't just come from one area, which helps out. It makes a difference. So when you think about all that, I think we're doing pretty good. And I figure, what, about a month or so, we'll have the budget. Around April? Probably around April, we'll have the budget squared away, and then we'll be able to give you a better idea exactly what's going on and where we're spending money and where we're saving money. So again, I want to thank our administration because they're doing a great job. And I don't think, I say it enough times, we appreciate what you're doing, and I really mean that sincerely. All right.
Consent agenda. Do I have a motion and second to vote by consent agenda on Resolutions 2025-118 through 2025-138? Motion. Second. Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Loeb.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolutions 2025-118 through 2025-138 by consent?
Make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loeb.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-139, resolution authorizing and approving additional temporary budget appropriations in the amount of $346,072. Do I have a motion and second?
Summoned.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loeb.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-140, resolution awarding contract for providing testing services for Cumberland County Engineers Office and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier Number 181-CC-CCPS, bid number 25-02. Do I have a motion and second?
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loeb.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-141, resolution awarding contract for providing water treatment services for the County of Cumberland, bid number 24-43. Do I have a motion and second?
Summoned.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
This is, when you say the motor, the 141, I'm trying to get to it here, is this the contract for auto repair, that one?
This is water treatment.
Water treatment, okay, yes. Trying to catch up here.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loeb.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-142, resolution awarding contract for specifications for 2023 Local Great Impact Fund Road Program, CR 674 from CR 615 North Gloucester County, City of Vinley, Cumberland County, New Jersey, bid number 25-01. Do I have a motion and second?
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loeb.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-143, resolution awarding contract for providing interpreter services and sign language interpretation services for the County of Cumberland, bid number 24-24, resubmission. Do I have a motion and second?
Summoned.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loeb.
Yes, but may I ask a question? Where are these services being utilized? In your office?
My office, there's a couple other offices, I think.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-144, resolution authorizing application to and acceptance of funding from the State of New Jersey Department of Human Services, Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services, Disaster Response, Crisis Counseling Grant Program. Do I have a motion and second?
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loeb.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-145, resolution rejecting all bids for providing title insurance services for the County of Cumberland and authorizing the re-advertising for requests for submissions, RFQ number 24-51. Do I have a motion and second?
Summoned.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loeb.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-146, resolution awarding a contract for providing community support services, older Americans Act services for the elderly and disabled for the 2025 through 2027 area plan contract, RFP number 24-55, resubmission. Do I have a motion and second?
Yes.
I'll make the motion, or second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loeb.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-147, resolution awarding fair and open contract for providing a Class C RV vehicle for the Department of Human Services, RFP number 25-04. Do I have a motion and second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht. Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-148, resolution awarding contract for providing vehicle repair services for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier Number 181-CC, CCPS Bid Number 25-03. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Director, can I make it before?
No, wait before you did. I need a second. We have, we have, we have a motion, we have a second. Now we have discussion.
I threw out an idea that we've done this every year I've been here. We've been out to, and one person wins it, one company, which is ridiculous that one company at the center can service all our vehicles or we send it out. And other fleets across this, across the country use, use a different method. And to tell me that every vehicle has a certain, the same amount on every vehicle that we have is the same amount we charge on oil changes or basic stuff, yeah, you can say that, but to understand or figure out what a vehicle, how to fix a vehicle, what can be done, there's always variations. And I know these companies, and we've chose different ones, and they're very reputable these companies, but I thought that maybe we can get into the, I guess, the 21st century and start looking what other fleets do, because we have four hundred and some vehicles, you said, or four hundred vehicles, that they, you know, their fleet management, there's sometimes a problem with our people taking care of their vehicles, because if they're going to one place and they're all the way down to Moore's or Township or downtownship, this place is all the way up, is in the middle of the deer field, that we can, they could actually have a car presented to maybe the people they trust, they deal with, and bring their vehicles, they may actually have a routine that they can drop their vehicle, and they're actually taking care of the county vehicles much they're taking care of their own vehicle. I, I was told that, oh, it has to be a certain way, it has to be, it can't be that way. I mean, prices vary depending on what is wrong and how it is, the matter what, whatever person, whatever shop is doing the repairs, whatever dealership is doing repairs, it differs. So, I mean, I would ask that we could at least look at this, or if not, look at how it can be changed, the fifth, that we would actually have more locations, more businesses in the county taking part in working on our vehicles. And I'd say a lot of things, spread the wealth that you can concentrate, and then you also can get, look at warranties, how they're covered, how they're backed up, and who does the best job, so we're not shooting the dart whoever bids not the lowest, we're actually getting a quality shop taking care of our vehicles, and you can judge that over time. So I just, I think that, I mean, I'll vote yes for this, but for future, we should at least look at that, and other fleets have to deal with all over the country. We don't have to deal with one county. And if we have more checks and balances and we add a subsystem where a card presented for payment, oil change could be standard, okay, but even that's not so standard anymore. But if actually fix it, we could actually, our controller could actually say, okay, I understand what's being presented, here's how much money we could spend on that, we could approve that. It's done through, through a more electronic basis, and it's, and it's covered, it's actually seen. We even get warranties tied to that if we have a standardizer, we know what's being It's bigger now than just having one individual oversight, oversight, over, looking over this. So I just think we should consider or look how we can do this better in the future. Thank you, Director.
You want to vote?
If he doesn't, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-149, resolution authorizing and directing re-advertising for requests for proposals for providing council services for the Cumberland County Construction Board of Appeals, RFP 24-61 resubmission. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-150, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contracts for providing legal services for criminal defense for the County of Cumberland, RFP Number 24-62 resubmission. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-151, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contracts for providing labor counsel and labor law related services for the County of Cumberland, RFP 24-63 resubmission. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-152, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract for providing litigation services, counsel for the County of Cumberland, RFP 24-64 resubmission.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
I want to make a point because of all these legal things we're applying to work, there's not, there is not one standard thing or one standard case, and it goes perfectly with the contracts that we, that business lawyer, there's not one standard thing that can be done, and yet we're, we're appointing these people to services with really a court project, except for our attorney, our solicitor, being on top of it, making sure how much money we dol out to what these individuals, these law firms, so, yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-153, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract for providing legal services as defense counsel for the Cumberland County Workers Compensation Program, RFP 24-66 resubmission. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second to accept the treasurers before as given?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion and second for authorizing payment of all salaries and wages?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner reports. Commissioner Ostino, would you like to start?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Number one, responding to Mrs. Acevedo out there. I'm well aware that a lot of these parks come through grants, but the maintenance and upkeep of them could be a burden to the taxpayers. So I, for one, will be keeping a close eye on that to see what the exact cost would cost, you know, run us at the end. So I will be keeping an eye on that for you. Also, I met this week with Melissa Niles from Human Services. We discussed homelessness and drug alcohol rehab programs in the county, and she has several ideas coming up, and I'm looking forward to working with her on those. We do have a major, what I would consider a major homelessness problem in the county. You can't go anyplace without seeing homeless people now, and we have to do something to try and curb it as much as we can. I don't think we could ever wipe it out completely, but we have to work hard and do something about it.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Commissioner Albrecht.
Yeah, the library that down in Moore's or Township, it's, their bids are being open on the 28th, are coming out on Friday. The key to this is that we had, it's the first time, I guess, we had over forty-seven questions asked when that RFP was put together by architects, by all the people involved that bid on it or bid on it. Hopefully, we're very successful, we get it. A lot of questions were asked, a lot of questions answered, and that delayed it over some month. This is a reminder that we received, there were three million dollars for due this. It's not just the library, I explained that in the past. And also, we have the ability, recently, they talked about, we might be able to get money to, for working, the actual working budget for this for the state also. I don't know if we have to apply for that or if we're going to get that. So something, something that's coming due, and we should, hopefully, it was successful, hopefully the bits are good and we can start up, which we have actually done some work already down there, so. Just a comment on the parks. Parks don't also, don't have to be a burden. Parks also can have fees collected, and we actually, our fairgrounds are actually being, actually in demand. We're actually getting, this year, we're getting the Pow Wow, the Indian group that moved away from Cumberland County and went to Salem, we're getting them to come back and have their annual event because of the fairgrounds, the upgrades we've done. We've had groups doing in August, it's not just having the, our, our, Fourth of July, our festival, the fairgrounds, that actually, which has been very successful, not just having that, we're having events before and after, and people are actually starting to book dates and times to handle the fairgrounds. The one, the one thing about the parks is that, you know, open space and having areas to, right now, we have, we look like we have plenty, but we take a look down Route Forty of all the warehouses that go up on, there's farm fields, and you're driving down, there's one right up the other, it's not, it's gone. The minute, if you don't start planning now, open space and woods and areas go. So that's what you have to plan now. Atlantic County does a fantastic job with parks, and they have different kinds of parks all over that, that people take advantage of. On every conceivable route they have, you see that bump into a park. If Cumberland County doesn't play on that, we will have that one day, maybe not today, but we may lose that. And a park system can stand on its own, can pay fees, can support the staff. An example is Mercer County, that they, Mercer County, which, they're wealthier than us right now, but they have golf courses, they have hockey ricks, they have, they have all kinds of facilities for their people, and they all bring in revenue, and that revenue is put back into the park system to make it even better. And we're nowhere near that, but you got to start somewhere, and that's what we've been doing, starting somewhere. And the fairgrounds is a prime example. They have a little postage stamp park right in Bridgestone that we're actually putting up on net, that kids hopefully will play. It's, I guess, a house burned down at one time, I don't know how we got it, but hopefully kids can wander and just kick a soccer ball and have a feel. So you think, think all kinds, it's not, it's park, it's a park in a park, it can become in all shapes and forms, and if we don't do it, it'll be gone, so we might as well start playing it now. And that's what we've been doing, and it can stand on its own if we do it right. I also want to bring up a concern. EMS in this county, we, when I first got here, was starting to become a crisis at that time, well, it's only gotten worse. The Bayshire communities are worried because they're, many of their volunteer departments are going away, and Spear came in and did, Spear Hospital came in and promised the world, and many of them grabbed it at the time. Well, that bill's starting to come due. And they, the EMS is a, is a necessary, a necessary part of government function, or actually, there were volunteers at one time, that if we don't, I think this, this board has, maybe not financially, but at least an organizational responsibility to help figure out a solution. There are a lot of good governments down there, little good committees, that we're looking for leadership, and I think we can provide that. And so before it's a bigger crisis, let's kind of at least go down there and kind of start thinking about how to take care of them, because, you know, somebody may make a phone call, and somebody may not be there eventually. So it is a crisis, and it's something we should deal with. Thank you, Director.
Commissioner Loews.
Commissioner? Well, first, I just would like to say I'm very happy that we're discussing sign language interpretation today, because it is Copular Implant Awareness Day, and that's something very near and dear to my heart. I have a family member who lost their hearing as an infant, and they were, you know, very fortunate at a very young age to get a Copular implant, and it really changed everything. And I attribute a lot of that to sign language interpreters, who actually came once a week, we gathered as a family, I mean, a whole bunch of us, twenty-five, thirty-five of us, I'm in my aunt's living room, and learned how to speak sign language. So having interpreters available to the public is so important, and I think it's incredibly fortuitous that we're discussing this on Copular Implant Day, and I want to give a little nod to the Vineland School District for also honoring Copular Implant Day, so thank you for that. Number two, I do want to address questions from the public, that we are, concerns that we are not addressing economic development, or the needs of families who are struggling. we are not addressing economic development, or the needs of families who are struggling. Believe me when I tell you, having been an educator for the last 12 years and working in the Bridgeston School System, the Vinland School System, and the Millville School System, I'm no stranger to the economic struggles that our families face. And believe me, I see that every day when I talk to my students. And, you know, the things that we have, you know, you don't even think about what you do to help when you see somebody in need. But, and we can never do enough. There could not be any level of government that could ever do enough. But to say that we're doing nothing to address economic development, or to address these families who are struggling, I think is a shortcoming.
I didn't say that.
Well, okay. Well, to say that we're doing not enough. But the effort is there, and I will say that just tonight alone, there are four resolutions on the agenda that address youth services. There are three resolutions on the agenda that address seniors, special needs, and one specifically for providing hot meals in the city of Millville. There's one for education, four for roads, which do support economic development and support our families. And while you may not believe it, that's a huge part of, you know, having safe roads and transportation, so that people can get to their doctor's appointments and be healthy and safe. And there's also two resolutions addressing health needs in the county. So again, while we can never do enough, there are efforts that are being made, and believe me, it is not lost on us. As far as the park system, we've gone around for years and talked to businesses to try to create interest in people coming here. It is starting to happen, as Commissioner Sorrow mentioned, there are some, you know, really impressive businesses that provide a lot of jobs coming into Cumberland County, and it's a fantastic start. When we've talked to these businesses, what they're looking for is an environment that can support their workforce. They want to see good education. They want to see open spaces. They want their families to be healthy and thriving here when they come to Cumberland County. It's not just about providing a place for kids to play soccer, it's about a place to provide families, adults, to have a healthy, active lifestyle. And that is really our interest there. And that's just one little component of what our mission is up here. And the last two things, kind of for me, go hand in hand. I see, there's a lot of changes happening all over the place. I see a lot of people who are just so angry, and that's no way to be, to wake up and choose anger, you know? And I like to try to redirect our focus. You know, we always want to point fingers, what politician, what leader, what person isn't doing their job, isn't doing what I demand that they do. And I have to say that sometimes when, you know, we feel, and believe me, we all feel frustrated by those same things, right? That's kind of, I'm pretty sure why we're all here, right? Because we've seen things that are frustrating. But what we also try to do is not just this, but also go out into the community and serve, and to help, and try to contribute some type of energy of our own time to making Cumberland County specifically better. So I just want to give two announcements. One organization that's very near and dear to my heart, and I know Commissioner Taylor as well, is Citizens United. They do a ton of work to protect our March River watershed, they do fieldwork, research, education. It's something that's definitely touched my life, and I think it's a really great organization. I will be cooking chili for their annual chili cook-off on March 8th at 6:00 at the Marsh River Fire Hall, I'm sorry, Marstown Fire Hall. Tickets are $30. We donate all the food. There's a lot of great chili chefs there. I've been doing this for years, it's a great time. So if you'd like to support such an amazing environmental organization, I suggest you come eat some chili on March 8th. And lastly, this is the week leading up to Read Across America Day. I myself did participate in that, and I just want to share this story, because it's really one of my favorite things that I do all year long. Don't worry, I'm not going to read you this book. But I want to share with you that I did go into our elementary schools today and share a really beloved story of mine. This is one of my son's favorite stories, those darn squirrels. And, you know, we have a great time reading it, and the kids raise their fists and get mad at the squirrels. But it is a story about when you see somebody who is struggling, or somebody who is upset by something, to try to offer something in return, to give them some joy, give them something to look forward to, give them some kind of hope. And I just want to share that message with all of you. Please try to take that into your week. And also, in honor of Read Across America Week, you may not realize it, but share your favorite book with a child, tell your story. They don't know it, they're so locked in on these things. Take the time to share a story with a child this week in honor of Read Across America. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Romero?
Well, this week, I also met with Melissa Niles. We talked about the, our Route 49 facility for homeless. There were also a lot of people there from, from Boys and Girls Clubs and other identities in the county. It was very helpful being there, listening to them, learning about what Melissa's doing with them. And they're doing great things. And I also met with Lisbeth and the election board. We discussed some of the issues we got during our elections. We kind of brainwashed, you know, what can we do better, what can be done, and anyone told the good things that it did happen, you know? Everything is not all bad. Where, like, I was looking at her board, and it was 15 things out of control, 15 things going to keep being controlled, but there were 60 things that were done right. So we are, we're moving in the right way. So then, I'd like to talk about all of them, but they are working hard in making an election a lot easier, and the cost has gone up a lot. That's, that's one of the things, I mean, from 267,000 up to about 700, 800,000. The overtime, wherever we have, we have right now, three areas that we, that we are voting, and it's costing us a lot. I mean, it really is. So there's a lot to be considered, and early voting is a big cost, state or not, learned about that. And, but we're moving forward. We, we are doing, you know, seeing what we could do to make things better at this election time.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor?
I, I'd like to take a minute and just talk about the county park situation. I am definitely forward for the park, the county park. What Doug and Tori had to say about the park was spot on. You know, when you get involved with an organization like Citizens United, and you have the opportunity to volunteer your time when buses of kids come from Vinland, Bridgeston, that have never had the opportunity to take a walk in the woods, or take a walk through the, to the Burns Down and Byval, and the wonder, and the awe in their eye, they've found deer bones, or they've seen, they, Citizens United has a stuffed coyote that they use as a prop, and the kids are just amazed. They haven't had these opportunities before. So, you know, with our county park being at the fairgrounds, it would be my dream to see educational opportunities unfold there. You know, the transportation cost alone probably could be cut if we didn't have, you know, the schools didn't have to bus all the way to Byval and different places, which they still could do, but it's just, just a different learning opportunity. So, you know, I just would hope you would keep that in mind when you think about what we would spend on the county park versus what we could get maybe in grant money to offset the spending. Then I also would like to talk about what Commissioner Romero said. I did meet with the Board of Elections, I was able to get there early, I had a tour of the facility. And it's funny, like, with most places that I have been, been to for the county, everybody's asking for a bigger space, you know, and that's taxpayer dollars. So how can we be a little more efficient at this time to utilize the spaces that we have? It was very enlightening what Lisbeth had shared with me, things that, you know, as a regular citizen, I had never thought about, you know, what the cost is for the election, how hard they have to work. And there's money that they can, can go after and be reimbursed. We had seen some of those figures. And just the overall concerns of some of the employees, so it was very, very good meeting.
Good. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Director?
Thank you, Director. So affordability, to me, is always at the forefront of my thinking when I sit down here. And it's at the forefront of all of the families here in Cumberland County. And I know I've spoke about this before, and I'm going to speak about it again. We've had significant rate increases for our electric, and that affects everybody. That affects, this is a nonpartisan issue. And I've expressed my concerns with what is yet another proposed rate increase. Now, this is going to be determined by the BPU, this is an unelected body. Unelected. They're appointed. So our voices have to be loud, and they have to be strong, letting them know that these rate increases are difficult, difficult for everyone down here in Cumberland County. And I've discussed this, and what I'm going to ask for this board to do is pin a letter or perhaps do a resolution, expressing to the BPU the concerns that we have over these potential rate increases and the effects that it will have on the people here in Cumberland County. And I know this board has been very supportive of that. I believe this is at the forefront of my thinking and this board's thinking is always the concern for the affordability for the citizens of Cumberland County. So the last thing I want to mention after that is just, there's a, Port Norris is having their fried oysters and ham dinner coming up on March 30th. And I know I'm saying this early, but I think you have to get in soon because they fill up quick. They, it's, it's fantastic. So it's a great event, it's great people, it's fabulous food. If you haven't been there, if you like fried oysters the way I do, I would highly recommend it. They have a Facebook page, so I would highly recommend that and suggest you take a look. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. To go over some of the things like with the park system we talked about, real quick, we had a meeting, and I thought it was a great meeting. And I say the individual, individuals that we met with, a lot of times in the audience you get booed, you know, booed. And because it was the DEP, and you know how everybody loves the DEP in South Jersey, but I'm going to tell you why. They were very, very cordial. They really were, they were very cordial. It was the DEP, it was Green Acres, and it was Fish and Game. Three entities from the state of New Jersey. They took the time to meet with us, okay? It was a Zoom meeting. And we discussed the Cohansick, what do you call it, the country club and the golf course. And we also talked about East Point Lighthouse. Now, they are very much in favor of working with us on both issues. Now, this is, this is major for us, okay? Getting back to Cohansick, again, talking with Matt, or yeah, they got it, okay? Lot of grand money, okay, to make it work. You know, you talk about seeing these, you know, people coming out, kids that live in inner city, never see a park, okay? Well, we're going to have these walking parks, and the Cohansick will take care of the western side, meaning Bridgeston, Fairfield, Upper Deerfield, Stoke Creek, Ringwich, who am I missing? Oakwell, okay? These individuals be able to come to this park. So we're working on that, and they're very, very much wanting to give this back to us. We have to work the numbers, and I think when we do that, it's going to be very, very positive. Are we close to those numbers? You were, you were on that. Right. The other was the Lighthouse. We explained to the state of New Jersey that there's no feasible way that Cumberland County could afford to take over the Lighthouse. It's not possible. We just, we don't have that kind of money. And they understood that. So there's still going to be the stewards of it, where, you know, the major financial cost, for instance, if there was something wrong with the infrastructure, the roof or whatever, they would be the ones to take care of that. But we're going to be very much involved in leasing process, we're going to be involved in probably maybe expenses for electric. We were talking about that during conversation. Again, they're very, very receptive in working with us to get that lighthouse back up and running and open again. There's been a little contention on the lease, a little tension. We're going to have another meeting. I'm a firm believer that if you have a meeting and be honest with people, you know, sometimes you got to be straightforward. But I think people appreciate that because you're not lying to them, okay? So we're working on that. The other thing, when we talk about economic development, one of the issues that I've been working on, and I, I went to the South Jersey Economic Development District, and I mentioned at that meeting about a transportation department for Cumberland County. And I'm very serious about this. I wanted to see it happen, transportation department for Cumberland County. Right now, we have CATS, everybody knows Cumberland Area Transit System. It works very well, it's great. It's not only for seniors, it's for everybody, all right? It's a free bus service, but it doesn't have a fixed route. And in Cumberland County, we have people that can't afford to own a vehicle, and they can't get from one area to another for their jobs. There's a Rutgers study that I read, and it has to do with getting transportation, we'll say with CATS, where they can, we can bring an individual to a certain area, and then maybe in Spear, when it comes to health, they'll be able to bring them to the next section. And then DOT would be able to bring them to the next section, all right? There's a lot of programming that's going to be involved in this. And again, this is something that's not going to happen overnight, we have to work at this. But if we do this and get a fixed route in Cumberland County, we're going to be able to get individuals all over the county. If you're in Bridgeston and want to get to Vinland or get to Millville, you're going to be able to do that. People in the townships, if they want to get some place, they're going to be able to do that. A gentleman by the name of Zimpino, Mike Triad, all right, was really interested in it. He does the grant funding, he does a lot of the grant writing. And he was speaking to an individual, and they were very excited about making this work. And we're not talking about 500,000, a million dollars, this person's talking big dollars. We need big players, right? The only problem is, we don't know how to do it. I admit that. We really don't know how to do it on our own. We're going to need help, and we're going, that's the reason why Mike's going to be involved, we're going to get big players, we're going to get people that know how to do this, get them involved and start working on this, so this way we can get transportation throughout Cumberland County. And I truly believe, after reading that study, we do that. You want to talk about economic development? There's going to be a lot of economic development because people are going to be able to move around. Not only that, businesses will see that we're very serious about moving people to their jobs, and they're going to want to come in because we do have a workforce here. That all being said, does anybody else have anything else for the board? If not, I'm finished. We have...
We do need an executive session, there is no action anticipated. Take it out.
Okay, Clark, if you read?
Resolution 2025-154, Resolution Providing Fair and Open Professional Service Contract for Providing Litigation Services. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Senate Fair and Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:412. Matters relating to the purchase lease or acquisition of real property or the investment of public funds, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, matters relating to the employment relationship. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino?
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Loads?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand?
Yes.
Director Sorrow?
This has been a QBC Television production in association with our partners and sponsors. QBC broadcasts on Comcast Cable Channel 22 and livestreams its programming on Facebook and YouTube. All rights reserved by Quinn Media and QBC. Programming that serves the South Jersey market.